Okay, we're gonna, uh, we need to order and say the pledge.
Let us do the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, we call to order. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak? We open for him. If not, we're going to move on. I get approval of the agenda. Um, Don, is there anything you'd like to have?
No, sir.
Lyle? Pete?
No.
Julie?
No.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
No.
Jenny?
No.
Then I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent to general, so everybody get a chance to take a look at that during the meetings, claims to the month. Anybody, any questions on the claims?
No.
Got a resolution approving the general records retention schedule? Everybody get a chance to look at that?
That's just so we can destroy records.
Okay, but I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No public hearings. New business, ambulance request.
Cheryl. Um, good evening. I'm Cheryl representing the ambulance service for Winthrop. Um, we are requesting a twenty-five, up to $25,000 transfer from the Pitzner reserve money that we have, um, for us to purchase a cardiac monitor slash twelve lead. The reason that we're requesting that at this point is, um, kind of twofold. Right now, um, we don't have a cardiac monitor. We do have up to fifteen to twenty-five minute, um, transport times to hospitals and the sooner that we can detect some of these, um, STEMI's, which I gave you information on what a STEMI is in your packet, gives us better patient outcome. It is something that our medical director last fall, um, suggested that we look into start doing. Um, he's very in favor of that it's something that we're capable of doing, these twelve leads. Our services that we intercept with do the twelve leads for us right now, but we're still looking at maybe even up to a ten-minute intercept time with them, which once again increases our diagnostic capabilities. The second reason that we're bringing this up now is one of our automatic blood pressure monitors in our rigs has failed and we're looking at needing to replace that and that is a cost of between four and $6,000 to replace that in itself. Right now, with the inexpensive models that we're buying, we're getting about two to maybe three years of life out of them. Um, so this LifePak 15 that we're looking at purchasing will replace that automatic blood pressure. Will replace our AEDs, which we carry in the rigs right now, which we will continue to carry, but it is an option for an AED. It does the twelve lead. It also monitors pulse oximetry, our oxygen levels in our bloodstream. Um, it can also monitor carbon monoxide levels. Um, it's got a metronome in it to help us with cardiac compressions when we're doing CPR. So it's a very complete unit to replace a couple of other units should we start to have issues with other things failing.
So are you, you would be getting it for just the one rig?
Right now, we would be getting it for just the one rig. I have written a, I have written a grant, submitted them this summer, but with the grant process, um, it's a very slow process. I've, we've been declined one grant from one company. Um, I'm still waiting to hear from two other companies. Should a grant come through after this unit is purchased, we would just, we would purchase a second unit with that grant money and use it like it was stated in the grant, um, for our second rig.
Well, I trust you people know what you need, so I'll entertain a motion.
Do I need to recuse? Do I need to recuse?
No, you don't need to recuse.
I got a question. If we withdraw $25,000, is that gonna screw up the $100,000 plan that was set up?
No, there's money coming in from some CDs in early part of 2017 and we'll just use that and take it out of there and it'll all be fine.
Just a question.
Okay. And that I don't know, so.
No, that's fine.
Is that portable?
It is. Yep, um, it comes with a built-in battery. Um, on the last page of the specs that I gave you, it does have a battery life, um, for it. It does come with a built-in battery. It is a power unit, so it will be plugged in when it's in the rig and in use in the rig, but we can take it out of the rig, take it into homes on scene with us, get that information going, um, that type of thing right there. So there is some training that's involved with it. Um, I've already contacted a couple of people who are willing to do the training for us and I'm sure our medical director would also help keep us trained on it, so.
It's a very good use of the funds.
Yeah. Um, Lyle, have you made a motion?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Julie has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, utility budgets.
Uh, the utility budgets are all in your packets. They're, haven't changed much from last year, so, uh, we just need to approve them. They don't affect the levy at all. These are based on our rate structure and, and, you know, based on if we go forward with the electric rate study, the electric budget may change next year, so.
Any questions?
The department heads have reviewed them, so.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Rate study.
Uh, the electric committee met, well, Pete was there and so were you and then we brought you up to date later. Um, we met with Dave, or I've discussed with Dave Berg on giving me an estimate on doing a rate study analysis. Uh, the last time we had one done was 1988. We had Dolan and Berg do it a long time ago. Um, the cost study is $13,000 and it would start in early 2017. Um, the committee, we did talk to Paul Kating, our electrical engineer, about it also, and he said that was a fair price and that he recommended that we have one done too, just to see where we were at and what should change, shouldn't change. What we're putting away for reserves is adequate for future projects and equipment and, and whatnot. Um, I did review some of the people on his reference list and everyone that I have talked to said he does good work, he has good follow-up, he's there to answer questions, you know, he does a good job. So I think the electric committee was in favor of it and I need council approval.
I have a question. Will that be paid for out of 2017's funds?
It would be paid for out of the electric fund.
Next year's funds?
Yes.
Correct. Is that something we can look at, maybe putting off another year due to the shortage we're gonna be coming into?
That won't affect the electric budget at all.
Okay.
So.
I move that we approve the rate study.
This motion made. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Arc flash analysis.
We also talked to Paul about arc flash analysis. Kelly and Pete were in on this conversation also. Uh, he explained how the process worked and he said that his firm, Bar Engineering, would be willing to do an arc flash analysis up, if we agreed, up to $5,000 to see where we were at at that time. He recommended that we for sure have the water plant checked and he was down there the day he came out with Mark and looked at some stuff, so, and I think he answered all your questions, didn't he?
And is everybody familiar with that arc flash analysis?
No.
No.
Why don't you explain that a little bit?
It's to protect the employees when they open like a transformer box. There's a potential arc flash that could happen when they open the box and it, it's kinda complicated because if you're, like, say there's a transformer that's five blocks from the substation. He will test one of them and it will be assumed that all of them will have the same arc flash, so they don't all need to be tested.
Yeah, he'll test one on the other end too, so.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And the main reason we're doing this is for the safety of our employees. If they were to open up any electrical box, there's always a chance of an arc flash. So what they're going to do, it will tell the employees what they need to be wearing, what type of clothes, what kind of protection, if they're gonna be working on it. Um, right now, I, I'm, I'm a little unclear. If OSHA came in, if there was an accident and we did not have this done, we would be in trouble. But I don't think it's something that is required at this time. It's just.
Are our employees qualified to do this?
Not, they are gonna do the analysis. Kating's.
No, 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 I mean open the boxes.
Yes, absolutely.
Gordy?
They do it now.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. What I mean by law, by OSHA standards?
Yes.
Well.
Well.
No, 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 I'm just asking.
I wanna make it sound like it's dangerous, but I mean, like, for example, Paul said there is like a, a suit of shirts and Gordy said, ah, I don't need a suit, you know, but, but.
He's got the clothing and he does wear his RF equipment when he's opening a box.
So he'll have to probably change some.
He might have to change some stuff, yeah.
No, no, a lot of companies have to have a, an electrician do this, you know.
Well, they are licensed electric, uh, bar alignment. Yeah, they are, yeah.
And what we're looking at, um, you know, I thought about, do we need one for the entire city? And it was, um, Kating's that felt that, no, we did not need something that each and every one. Um, the one bid we got from MMUA, was it? That was $10,000.
Yeah, and then we, we had a couple others from some other cities that they shared with me and they were upwards of $20,000.
So in order to keep it down, uh, there was a not to exceed $5,000. He felt he could do the arc flash analysis on the most important equipment, um, the most hazardous of those.
And like I said, his, his theory was that you don't have to test every box.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you're making some assumptions, he said, but he's saying, you know, it's good on this end and good on the other end. They gotta be, Dale, you understand electricity in that part more. It's gotta be good, you know, so.
If one ground fault works, the all the everything behind it works, yeah. Same thing, no.
So all the boxes will be paid and they'll have the, uh, the information on there. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
I'd make a motion to hire, uh, Bar Engineering to do the arc flash, yes.
Seconded.
There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There's no unfinished business. We're gonna go to the city administrators report.
Where is it? Okay, okay. The park committee met, um, and discussed some projects, projects in the park. Uh, the softball shack's been tinned and the sides and the roof. The wifi's been installed and we did get billed for that now, so I'll apply for the grant funds to, to get that. I emailed Wade after you mentioned that at the last council meeting. He has not responded, so I'll have.
I talked to him too.
Did you? Okay.
He said there are two cameras at this time pointing at the park, um, but he has some concerns about that, that we maybe want to try and add an extra one because the views aren't that great.
Is he going to request the funds then?
That was my question.
I have, my understanding is that we've already paid our.
No, we haven't given them any money.
We have, oh, okay, oh, that's six thousand.
Yeah.
I thought you meant more than we would want.
No, no, but are they gonna request the, uh, that what we agreed to pay?
We approved that, right.
Yeah.
I understand that. I didn't talk to him about that. I just said, uh, we had some concerns about the cameras.
Well, I had talked to him about it up at school. He said, he said, you're gonna be getting billed, basically.
I thought they were gonna put a camera in there for us and I thought that was, you know, it's not there.
Where was the camera supposed to be located?
In the park, sorry.
In the park.
Yep.
Yeah, it was my understanding that they were gonna get at least one, if not two, extra cameras and we were gonna pay for them, but it would be part of that system and looped in with that system. Which they did not do, but you guys can still either, you know, contribute the funds or not contribute the funds. That's up to you guys, I guess, but it doesn't sound like they provided us the cameras that we asked for.
Well, I think we need to have the cameras.
Yeah.
Okay.
How was that communicated? Was it?
It was not at all to me.
From their end or, I mean, we told them what we were.
Mm-hmm. When they came and requested the money, we said we would like to be part of that and we would like one or two cameras.
Yeah.
On that system in the park and they said, sure, we'll let you know when we put the system in and nobody let us know, so.
Cause that was the deal.
Mm-hmm. I mean, not that we can't.
Have you got that in writing?
I have it in the minutes, recorded in the minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I emailed him about him and he hasn't got back to me, so until I hear from, okay. Um, okay, what, we also discussed, um, Lyle and Julie discussed having a walking path on the north end of the park cause we do have some funds in reserves for a walking path. Oscar got a quote from Nysens. I don't have it yet in my hands, um, but I also told them when they do the street project next year, maybe get a quote from, you know, when, once they bid out the 2017 street project, ask whoever's gonna be doing the paving then to give us quotes since they'll be here. Might be cheaper. Um, we also discussed the sidewalk survey and it was decided to put together a replacement plan and start budgeting some money for sidewalk replacement. I did go through it and there are a couple areas that we could start with, but we'll discuss that later. Um, the city code states that sidewalks are 100% owner responsibility, but our assessment policy states that the city will pay 50% of replacement costs and assess 50% to the homeowners.
Was that always said?
That was the new assessment policy that we adopted when we did the 2015 street project. Um, and the park committee did agree that maybe the city could pay 50%, I mean, if you guys want to and that we're not discussing tonight, I'm just letting you know.
The park committee decided?
Yeah. Well, no, they would possibly recommend it.
On those walking paths, you mean?
Uh, sidewalk replacement.
Sidewalks.
But that's not on the agenda tonight and I'm just letting you know what we discussed.
So what were you talking about, walking paths on the north side, just along the street or?
From the current path system, like by the park shelter there and then going maybe through to the other shelter.
You're right.
Yeah, the one that your son.
Oh, okay.
His Eagle Skull project, yeah. Cause there's no real walking path between that area of the park and I guess people have asked about it, so.
Yep, they have.
Can we let the Winthrop Historical Society know we go fif, they wanna go 50/50 on that sidewalk?
I told them, I met with them last week. I went to their meeting and I said their sidewalk is on the agenda to be addressed next, next year.
As they approached us.
Yeah. But we'll worry, we'll deal with the sidewalks when it gets closer to, to spring.
Yep.
So we're gonna put something together over the winter and then I think we discussed having the public come to some meetings and kinda hear what they have to say about sidewalk replacement and if people think it's an issue or they don't care or whatever, get some public input on it. Uh, we also reviewed the park budget and there really is nowhere to trim in the operating budget and there are no capital reserves to speak of, so we really can't cut anything there. Kating came out October 18th and met with Gordy, Kelly, Pete and myself. We discussed the arc flash, which we already discussed, um, and I included his email with, uh, support beams for the main line coming into town. Yeah, they're gonna work on that over the winter. Art Gatchel with MMUA On-Site On-Demand stopped in last week. He's going to be here November 9th at 1 o'clock to meet with utility staff, um, to discuss the On-Site On-Demand program and answer any questions they may have. We may reschedule that now. But he would like to get started while it's still warm enough to do some outside work. He said if you start in the middle of winter and you're just sitting doing classroom work, it's quite boring, so. Uh, the crossing flasher has been shipped back to us. I did email MINDOT. They're gonna try to get out this week to put it up and they're gonna work with TAPCO and the street department, um, to get that hopefully fixed soon. Um, I attended the league regional meeting October 26th. We discussed dealing with difficult people and had some roundtable discussions on interpersonal situations and unique city interests. They had a discussion about elections, uh, and Gary Carlson was there to talk about the tax bill and he is going to be here next Monday night for our budget work session also to discuss ag containment and our tax capacity issue. Um, there's a meeting November 19th, the Governor's Council on Freight and Economic Development. Julie Rath is going to be there and she's gonna report back to the cities on what they discuss. Uh, the police committee met. We went over the budget and we discussed some cuts that we could possibly do if we have to, um, at the November 14th meeting. The historical society met last week. I did attend that meeting and I, we discussed sidewalks and some other projects that we could maybe work with them on. They also asked about the jail building and I told them that it was always, you know, that they had, I think, talked to Kelly about maybe using it and I said, I don't think, you know, if, once you have a plan, come to the council and discuss it and I don't know that there's a huge issue with them using it, so. Uh, the tr, bushes have been trimmed by Faith United and Gordy put the Sibley and High Street signs up by Johnson's, so that's it.
Any questions?
Oh, wait, I did have a couple other things. I did email Amy, um, Newsom about Digital Town and she's hoping that should be ready to go by Christmas. She's gonna hopefully start training on that next month. And I emailed the Army Reserve guy and he is waiting to hear from the Minnesota Historical Society on the monument and there won't be any action on that building till March or April. They don't sell buildings and they won't, they don't sell buildings in the winter, so.
So we gotta wait for word on the monument if we wanna move it?
Yes. So now I'm done.
Pretty good, thank you. Mark, you're up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, esteemed staff, I'm here to give the October EDA report. Um, the council will now, so this has changed a little bit since I wrote this, but I'll just read through it then we'll discuss it. The Dairy Queen House demo. The council will need, need to approve the contract for deed to, uh, have it demolished this month, we hope. Uh, the contract for deed stipulates that Ground Zero will demo the house at no cost to the city or the EDA and in exchange will have five year, five years to develop the property. Uh, there was a little mix-up in communications. Uh, the owner of Ground Zero sent me an email, uh, referencing a, a demo in Dave Shower. I assumed it was the Winthrop Opportunities, Dave Shower thing at the BP. So that didn't get forwarded to Don till today. He's gonna need a little bit of time to work on it. This needs to be approved by the council, right? Because you guys own that house because it's, it's in your name. While the EDA paid for it, we put it in the, the city's name. And then on a related matter, maybe we can talk about them both, Don, uh, we also approved a bid from a Ground Zero to demolish the former Tom Miller, uh, plumbing office just north of the Red Rooster. It's, it's all falling down, just needs to come down and I believe the council will need to approve that as well.
And there's no reason that you're gonna do that tonight if you want, but given the issues that are, or given the changes that are being made, um, we're not gonna have the contract for deed ready for you until the special meeting next week.
And I did put it on the agenda for that.
Right.
I don't know when he's coming to do the BP property. Uh, there was some discussion about the permits from the state. Uh, he indicated to me that the holdup was he thought the city had applied for the permits and that confused me. I don't know why we would do that. So they've been submitted, he says, and he told me the last I heard from him about two weeks ago was that he was expecting the permits back the first week of November. So this week, next week, and then he wants to come in and, and tear down the BP or, or, or what he's going to do in the Tom Miller house and the DQ house while he's here. It was about $4,600. It was approved, it was approved by the EDA.
I thought they were gonna rehab that gas station.
They're gonna, uh, Pete, they're gonna, um, take the roof off, I think, and, and, uh, take it down to the, to the, uh, block walls and, and rehab that part, but the islands are coming out and the, you know, the, all the cement's coming out and the tanks have to come out, so they're gonna try and save parts of the building that makes sense.
So do we want a motion to go ahead with the demolition of Tom Miller office this time?
You might as well. If he's in town and he gets started, he, uh, he can get it done. I thought it was a fair price and we only did one quote because he's in town and he's mobilized to do it and it just makes sense.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded to, uh, give approval to go ahead and demolish the Tom Miller, uh, plumbing office. Is there any further discussion?
Is this including the Dairy Queen house or?
No, this is, and it's not, and it's, and it's, and it's good point, Bob, and it's not the garage. It's only the house.
Oh, yeah. And the power runs through the house, so Gordy's gonna have to do some electrical work down there before the house comes down.
Yep.
Otherwise, if they shut the power off at the house, the garage won't have any power.
Would you make sure you notify?
He, he, yeah, he's told me about it, so just, that will have to be done before the house comes down, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Um, Dave Troublehorn last week went with Gaylord and it's a, a team from Gaylord and, and, and some folks from Arlington. One from Arlington on a tour of communities who have had medical schools built in their towns and I haven't, I just talked to Dave this afternoon on the phone. He's, he's, he said it was a great trip and we're trying to line, and Jenny, I'm gonna look to you for this a little bit cause you've been more involved. Uh, we're, they're trying to, I'll come up with a date, but the EDA director and the mayor can't, can't seem to figure it out. The 20th and the 21st are the dates that they're suggesting and I have both of those days open. Dave said it was a wonderful trip. He learned a lot. They wanna, we wanna have a meeting with the Gaylord team, Dave said, and the council and the chamber and Winthrop Opportunities and EDA.
And probably the planning commission.
And probably, and, and we'll meet and kinda go over what they found and, and what they learned. According to Dave, um, every town does it differently, but it has an effect within 20 mile, within a, a 20-mile radius of each of the towns is, is where there's really an effect and the issue seems to be housing. It's a housing issue, so. Do those dates work for you, Kelly? The 20th or the 21st? Oh, then it's the 21st and 22nd.
Are we talking on December or November?
This month, yeah.
November?
We're talking, I'm, then it's the, uh.
This month.
The 21st and, uh, 22nd, I'm sorry.
Of November?
Of November.
Yeah, those didn't work for him.
Okay, well, then it's up to you and I, I guess, to find a date. It's up to you, I guess, to find the date that works. Everybody else is fairly open and we're gonna have to do it now.
We can do it in December too, the first part of December.
How are they moving along there? I mean, with the medical school?
I think they're waiting for the, for word on. I think they expect that by the end of the year.
Okay.
Is, is what I've been told and I'm, and I'm in the same loop you're in.
Okay. And when were they doing this in Gaylord?
I don't know, next week or?
Doing it, yeah, the, not, the 9th or the 16th. That's, they're doing it in the next two weeks, I know that.
They're doing it as part of like a business after hours sort of thing.
Yeah, they're.
Can we do it, um, that week of the 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th?
I'm open.
The 15th is.
That's next week.
Yes.
I'm open all week, so.
The 14th is a council meeting.
Right.
And they wanna do this kinda late in the afternoon?
They'll be doing it probably at 5:30.
The council meeting?
Oh, the special, yeah, the budget meeting is at 7:00. This meeting will be at 5:30.
16 maybe?
16. I don't have my calendar here, but that's fine. Oh. I'm lost without my, just live here. I do.
So let's talk tomorrow and we'll, and we'll, and we'll, we'll, we'll have her with her, a calendar and we'll figure it out.
The council doesn't have to be there, right?
They want the council there because this is a planning, this is a planning issue for the entire city. This is.
Work for everyone else?
Council, chamber, EDA, Winthrop Opportunities.
We have it like 5:00.
I know you said the zoning.
Yeah, we have it at 5:30.
Well, John, I'll get one.
I probably can't, but that's okay. I'm not sure, I don't know if Dave's available on the 16th, but I don't remember.
I will. I signed up for a Doodle Polls today, so you're gonna, you'll get a Doodle Poll from me.
We'll talk tomorrow.
All right. Um, and lots for sales, a lots for sale sign should go up in the industrial park this month. Robin Keel made the signs and Gordy and Oscar are putting them up. They're a bit behind right now. We, we may ask the Miller brothers to, to help us out, get the polls set, uh, but we, we wanna get those up this month. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Don, do we need to talk tomorrow? Are we okay on the 14th or?
We should talk after the meeting.
All right, I'll hang around.